This conference will now be recorded.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
We're about to begin our meeting. Do we have any volunteers with a prayer of not?
I'll take it. Family, Father, we come this morning, thank you, Lord, for many blessings alive. Thank you for the opportunity that we have to come here and meet and put our minds at today's work, Lord, and represent the people of this county. We just ask that you give us insight, that you give us wisdom, and, Lord, that you be with us. Be with all the families in our community, those dealing with sickness, those who are bereaved. We just ask that you touch them in a special way. Give us where we fail you for us in Christ's name, with prayer of thanks, amen.
Amen. And I just want to amend a little bit to that prayer. Look good to see you. I did it in a political way. It's outstanding for the page of the pages.
Our pledge of allegiance, since the day of United States of America, and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may proceed. We have a proposal agenda before you. Are there any additions? Dave?
I have just one whenever Mr. Glenn gives an update on number 11. I just have one other zoning question for you.
Okay. Tim?
I don't.
Well, I want to add. I know it's not within our confines, but I really, I want to talk about the little part of the road. And Lily is almost a massacre to drive down, you know, but then talk about some of the road just for, just for a second. Just to throw some things out there. I asked some questions, see what anything we can do. Eugene? Tony?
No, sir.
Okay.
I'm moved, we approved it, Mr. Chairman.
I second.
There's been motion and second. All in favor by the show of hands, and that is unanimous. Oh, minutes were emailed to everybody. What's the pleasure of the board?
I so moved that we'll sit. Oh, minute.
And that's for two meetings, the March 2nd meeting and the March 16th meeting.
I so moved, I second.
Okay, there's been motion and second. Do we have any other discussion or addition on to that? If not, all in favor by the show of hand. Okay, that is unanimous, that passes. Mr. Steve is on you.
All right, well, if you don't mind, we'll invite Mr. Gene Allen up. He's on the agenda at 10 o'clock, but he's here early, so we'll pump him up. And he has completed our audit for our fiscal year that ended September 30th. So come on up, Mr. Gene, and give your report.
Yes.
Your brief report.
Thank you, sir, you want a brief report?
It's gonna be, it's gonna be fast though, he ain't gonna slow down.
Well, I started, I'll try to continue. All right. Thank y'all so much. This is for September 30, 2022. Everybody should have page one, the opinion letter. Let everybody pull the first page out of that, and I'm gonna read the first three paragraphs. And that would just give you an idea of what we had to do. We have audited the competent basis financial statements of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, the aggregate, discreetly presented component units, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of Dooley County, Georgia, as of for the year then ended September 30, 2022. And the related notes to the financial statements, which collectively comprise the Dooley County basic financial statements as listed in the table of content. We did not audit the financial statements of the Dooley County Health Department, a component unit of Dooley County. We will drop down to the paragraph. No, we did not audit the financial statements of the Dooley County Development Authority, a component unit of Dooley County. Both of the audits were done by other CPAs, and we rely on them. In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects, with respective financial position of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, and each major fund of the Dooley County, Georgia, as of September 30, 2022, and the respective changes in financial position and where applicable, cash flows are for the year then in, in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. Now, if I can turn to page.
So in just general terms, you said that, that says you found everything to be in accordance with general county standards?
Present fairly.
Okay, just to make sure everybody has.
Good opinion. Down the adverse opinion, a qualified opinion, you got the right opinion. Okay, if I can go to page. Go to page nine. And what, this nine and 10 is the revenue and expense of all the funds of Dooley County. We have a general fund, Sheriff's State Drug Fund, Transportation Investment Act Fund, SPOSS Fund, 13 SPOSS Fund, 19 L-MIG Fund, American Rescue Fund, help promotion of wellness grants, EMX trauma equipment, Dooley County Transit System, Georgia Forestry, and First Responder Grant. So what I'd like to do is come back over here to the general fund, and I'm gonna give you their total revenue and total expense. I'm not gonna go through each one individually, because that'd take a while. General fund, you had total revenue of $14,224,390. You had expenditure of $14,207,377. I have net $17,013. That's the balance at the end of the year. I take my beginning balance at the very bottom of the page, $2,351,376. Add the $17,031 to it, and it ended fund balance of $2,368,389. Sheriff's State Drug Fund, revenue was $276,260. Okay, hold on. Okay, the expenditure was $516,001, negative $239,741, negative $239,741. Prior year balance was positive $236,564, have a net loss of $3,00177. Transportation Act. If there's any question, please stop me.
How can a fund balance ending be negative?
You spend more money, you take in.
That's in the net change, but the fund balance ending is.
It's always been, it's just, that's after everything's said and done, that's a negative balance in the fund. It's not positive. Positive would be good.
But that doesn't mean their checking account was negative.
No, 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 that's, that's just receipt centers first, it has nothing to do with checking account at all.
Well, I reckon it would mean his overall balance in all his checking accounts decreased $3.07 from the previous year.
Now, this is forever. This started, started back years and years ago. They've taken so much money, they spent so much money. Over that period of time, we had a negative balance, $3,00177. Next year, it might be positive. It was positive last year. And what they did, they spent money from last year as expenditure for this year. So it just was, it was last year, but the positive balance was $236,564. This year, they took in $276, but they spent $516. And that $516 was part of that $236 from prior year, and it just worked out to be negative.
What, it's not understanding this. The fiscal year that you're auditing is from what date to what date?
October 1st, September 30th.
So if they're, if they're writing an expense out, and they write it out within that fiscal year, but it doesn't clear the bank until right after, is that why you get that?
Not really, not really, but it could happen, but.
I understand net changes will be negative. I don't see how the balance at the end would be negative in that account. I get the net change.
All right, that net change is from the very, very beginning. Now, this is not, this is not a cash balance, this is an equity balance. It's not what you got in the bank. Okay, Transportation Investment Act. Revenue was $1,119,722. Expenditures was $1,179,669, a net loss of $59,947. My equity from the prior year was $441,981, so it gives me, take off the $59,947. I got a net equity at the end of the year, $382,034. SPOSS, this is the 13 SPOSS, we took in no revenue, we spent $1,739, had a net of $1,739 negative. Prior year, I had a balance of $18,092. I subtract the $1,739 from it, end of the year balance is $16,353. SPOSS 2019, we took in $1,609,250. We spent $2,185,149, negative $575,899. We picked up capital leases, add to it, I got a net, I got a net positive $394,403. Balance at the beginning of the year was $70314. I take the $394, add the $700 to it, I've got an equity at the end of the year of $1,094,717. L-MIG, we took in $660,900. We spent $22,459. Equity, net, $638,441. Prior year, I had $352,672. I add those two together, again, equity of $991,117. American Rescue Plan, we took in $1,309,04. We spent $564,626, got a net of $736,278 positive. I add that $736,278 to the equity from the prior year, $933. I get net equity of $1,669,476. Help and promotion and wellness, we took in $3,000. We did not spend $3,000, so we got a positive $3,000. Our equity from the prior year was $4,901, add the $3,000 to it, end of the year is $7901. Now, some of these funds are gonna match the cash balance, when I go to the other page, you can see that. All right, trauma, we took in $4,471. We spent $4737, positive $54, we had $905. Add those two together, $959. Dooley County Transit, we took in $275,215. We spent $275,212. We got a positive balance at the end of the year of $3. Like this, this fund usually washes itself out each year. But we got $3 that we need to probably make an adjustment on, see. Georgia Forestry, we took in $5,000. We spent $5,000, had no prior, so it's a zero balance at the end of the year. First Responder, we took in $88,925. We spent eight, we took in that much, we spent $88,225. Spent more than we took in, we got a negative equity of $300, and we probably need to adjust that one off also. So if I, if I take all the, all the funds from one end of the page to the far right, I have a total revenue of $19,568,357. We spent $19,051,194, net of $517,163. Equity from the prior year was $97,0302. Add those two together, get total equity, $114,874,65. Prior equity was $5,040. Add the two together, I get $6,527,472. Now, that's revenue and expenses. Any questions about that? So now, let's go to six and seven. Okay, now, this is the, this is the assets and liabilities of each fund. So we're gonna start with the general fund, we got cash on hand with $2,394. Receivable, $401, city available, 225. Total assets are $3,021,699. Liberties, $653,310. Subtract that from the assets, I get a net of $2,368,389. Add the liabilities and the equity together, I get $3,021,699, which matches the total asset at the top of the page. Now, if you look, if you go back to page nine and look at the very bottom on the general, you're gonna see that the fund, the fund balances have to match. So if you go, you go to nine, look at the kind of general, you see $2,368,389. Come over to page six, look at the total fund balance, $2,368,389. These funds always have to balance out. If they're not, if they're not balanced, you start to go back and start looking. Okay, Sheriff's State Drug Fund and Equipment, $72,524. Spent, got payable of $75,701. I had a net of $3,0177. Equity of $3,0177. Subtract off with the $75,701 liabilities. Total liability fund balance is $72,524. Transportation Investment Act, cash on hand, $382,034. Did not spend any money in it, $382,034, $32,034, $32,034. Okay. SPOSS 2013, cash on hand is $16,353. Equity of $16,353. Total liabilities and equity is still $16,353. We had no liabilities. 2019 SPOSS, we have cash on, cash on hand of $1,052. Receivable is $134,867. Total assets is $1,187. Liability, liability was $93,137. We subtract that from the $1,087,854. We get net equity of $1,094,717. Take the $1,094,717, add the $93,137 liabilities, I get a matching figure of $1,187,854. That's right, that's right there on page nine. L-MIG, cash on hand is $909,1,017. No liabilities, $99,1117. Equity is $99,9117. Matches the top, matches the top asset. American Rescue Plan, cash on hand is $1,669,476. Restricted, no liabilities, equity is $1,669,476. Help, Wellness and Promotion, $7901. No, no, no liability, $7901, nothing from the prior year, $7901. Trauma, $959, no liabilities, net $959. That's nothing, prior year is $959. Dooley County Transit, Dooley County Transit, it, it took in. It washed itself out. What we, what came in went out. Got a zero balance on that $3 we got correct. Georgia Forest, no cash, no assets in it, it washed itself out. First Responder, we got a negative figure of $300, and we're gonna make an adjustment to zero that one out. So if I take, go to the left to the right of that total asset of $7,349,620. Liberties, $822,148. Equity in prior year was $4,159. Restricted is $2,368,389. A total of $6,527,472. And if you go back to page 10, next, the bottom line, you see that the equity there is $6,527,472, which matches the equity over here. Do I have any questions? No questions? Okay, I need to send this to the state, can I get your approval?
Need a motion on the phone?
I saw moves, Chairman.
I second. Okay. All right, it has been motion and second. Do we have any discussion before we go on? All right, if not, all in favor by the show of hand, and that motion carries.
Thank y'all very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Gene.
Yes. Can I ask a question? Do we have any Marines in this room? Marines in the room? No? Okay, I just want to ask a question.
He's a former Marine.
Oh, okay.
Is it the Marine birthday?
He's a former Marine, oh, oh. Where do you take with that? Okay.
I understand.
All right, Amanda, is Amanda here? Come on up. Amanda O'Neil with the Family Connection. I'd like to get Ms. Rhonda with her also, so.
We're a team.
Yep.
Good morning, I'd like to start off by saying deepest apologies for missing last month. You know how life goes sometimes, and had a little bit of an uh-oh, and I appreciate you guys letting me come this morning. I'm Amanda O'Neil Neeson, I'm the executive director of our Family Connection here in Dooley, and I brought with me the lovely and wonderful Ms. Rhonda Rand Heath, who is my fourth chair for Family Connection. Every five years, we like to come in and just kind of give like an overview of what we've done in five years. Because most people are familiar with us and know kind of what we do, but if you're not, right there, like, sitting at the table every time, some things get missed, and I just want you guys to know kind of what we've done. I know most of you are familiar with Family Connection, but I want to give you a quick overview of the goal of the work we do and a little information about the Georgia Family Connection Partnership. Where the state, the state designated Kids Count grantee. We also provide state agency and policymakers at all levels with current reliable data that they need to inform decisions about improving outcomes for the children, families, and communities they serve. Our value at Georgia Family Connection Partnership is in synthesizing and interpreting data into customized information and tools, specific to the collaboratives and partners' needs. So we don't, we don't just make stuff up. We use data to drive everything that we do, and not just one form of data. We use multiple platforms of data. We bring everybody, bringing everybody together has helped us to better understand and address the most pressing concerns of communities and partners. This disciplined approach to collaboration allows us to extend much-needed locally-based support and to make effective use of existing resources and services. We also connect creative solutions to expand, improve, and cultivate new efforts and work to eliminate service gaps. So at our core, we advocate for system changes that eliminate the barriers and inefficiencies standing in the way of progress and positive outcomes. A little about our vision, because this is kind of our backbone, this is kind of what we stand on, what all of our work is rooted in. We envision a Georgia and a Dooley where all children are healthy, prime for school, and succeed when they get there, where families are stable, self-sufficient, and productive, and where communities are vibrant, robust, and thriving. Georgia Family Connection connects and convenes key community members committed to improving the well-being of all children and families. We connect our partners to the resources they need, coordinate and manage efforts, and empower our communities to craft local solutions based on local decisions. Here in Dooley County, we've worked very hard to formulate a collaborative body that not only meets, but exceeds the values and goals set before us. We use the data from Kids Count, as well as locally-collected data, to help to formulate our best action plan. And then, with the assistance of local and state agencies and community partners, we work those plans to improve our communities. Now, every collaborative is different, because there's one of us in all 149 counties in Georgia. But each, each collaborative forms their own initiatives based off of local decision-making. So here in Dooley, our two main focuses are improving economic self-sufficiency for our families and improving school success for our children, with the main focus on early childhood literacy. We have several programs and services that were formulated and created from local collaboration. I'd like to give you a few things that we've accomplished in the last five years that served these two initiatives. In the last five years, we've given out over 4,000 books to children in Dooley County. But not only did we give out books, because we learned a long time ago that it doesn't matter if you hand a child a book, if the parents don't know how to read, or they struggle with it, or they don't know how to read to their children, then you're just really wasting your time. So we partnered with the Basics and with Get Georgia Reading, and we became a Get Georgia Reading campaign community. So now, we also, with every book that we distribute to children, we also distribute literature to parents that tell them how to read that book to their child, that give them tips and tricks for engaging their children. Not only that, we give them GED information about how they can further their education if they might need it. We've referred over 690 families to resources that are available in our community to help them overcome obstacles. That could be anything from DFAX to something that you guys might get help them with, to the GED program. That's the beauty of the collaborative process and having all of these locally-based people at one table is because we all know what everybody's doing, so it's easy for us to share those resources with members of our community when they come forward and need something. We've assisted over 900 families with providing Christmas gifts for their children through our not-for-profit, The Reason. 900 families, that's a lot of families in a place like Dooley. We serviced this past year, we serviced 211 families at Christmas. Some of those received food boxes, some of them just received Christmas gifts. But the beauty of what we do through The Reason is, most places, when they do the Christmas, they have a deadline, and it's usually pretty early out, like the 15th of December. And that's when everybody picks their stuff up. I cannot tell you the years that me and Rhonda have been at my office on Christmas Eve or early Christmas morning, because somebody ended up, they were thinking something was gonna happen for them, it didn't happen, and then their children had nothing. And that's something unique that we offer, that not many counties offer. We've served over 45 kinship families with assistance with school supplies, clothes, and toiletries. Kinship is aunts and uncles raising nieces and nephews, grandparents raising grandchildren. One in three children in our school is being raised by somebody not their parents. So the kinship, we got that through a grant with the kinship program through DFAX, and we are constantly building that and working that and making that bigger and better than it is. We've served 134 families with birthday gifts for their children through the Birthday Closet. We saw during the Christmas that there was a great need, that people just needed, you know, not a handout, but a hand up. And so we created the Birthday Closet. Now, families in Dooley can access that to get free birthday gifts for their children at no cost. We've secured $310,000 in grant monies and in-kind donations. Those numbers continue to rise as we add more and more programs and services that align with our data. For us to be as small as we are, our budget is $54,000. We have successfully secured over $310,000. It's closer to about $409 now, since I typed this up, because we just secured some more in-kind donations and another grant. So we're constantly working to leverage what we have in the work we do here to bring more funds in that we don't currently have. We've served over 360 youth and children, as well as an unknown number of students through the local partnership with basic toiletries through the Little Lily Project. The school system here is wonderful. They invited us them to do whatever we need to do that can help them obtain their goals. And one thing that we saw was that a lot of these children did not have basic toiletries at home. It's hard to go to school when you hadn't been able to take a shower. It's hard to go to school when you hadn't been able to wash your clothes. It's hard to go to school when you don't have basic needs. So we created the Little Lily Project. We partnered with them and created a toiletries closet within the school that the children can access, and nobody has to even know they accessed it. It's all anonymous. We started training all school employees, as well as law enforcement, to be youth mental health first aiders through a value grant. That's in partnership with Fort Valley State University. This is unique to us. We are one of four counties in Georgia that was selected to be part of a cohort through this value grant. And we sent people from the four counties to be trained to come back to their communities and be trainers. So me and Earl Clark went and received our certification, and we can now train all of our teachers and all of our law enforcement to be youth mental health first aiders. And what that means is, they get all the information they need to see and catch a crisis, a mental health crisis within the school, or if the law gets called to a home, they can recognize some of the signs, you know, it's easy, some of them are easy to recognize. You know that a child is in crisis, that a youth is in crisis. Some of them are not easy to recognize. Some of these children get labeled as just problem children, you know, because they have outbursts and stuff. When at the core of it, it is the mental health problem. We're also destigmatizing mental health. We're hoping to leverage this grant and the work that we're doing through this to bring in more mental health resources to Dooley County and surrounding areas. Because that's one of our biggest crises right now, is we have all of these, these youth and these children in mental health crisis, but we don't have enough resources to service them. These are just a few of the many, many accomplishments that I'm proud to have the opportunity today to share with you guys. Please know, we are available. We want to serve Dooley. If you have any ideas or anything that might help us improve our work, we're always open to hear it, or if you have questions, we're always available. I want to personally thank you guys for continuously to support us by being our fiscal agent. Without you, we couldn't do the work that we do, because we are grant-funded, so we have to have a fiscal agent to manage our monies. Very appreciative of that. I'm also appreciative of you for sharing Steve with me, who is wonderful and keeps me on track and, and keeps me going and in order. I'm very appreciative to him for all of his work. And to the ladies in the office, I love coming in every other week. They're always so inspirational and so uplifting, because sometimes this work can be, you know, hard. and so uplifting, because sometimes this work can be, you know, hard and very mentally taxing. And it's nice to come in and visit with them and kind of get an uplifting, you know, minute. So I'm very appreciative to you guys. Me and Rhonda, thank you so much for your continued support. And like I said, if you have any questions or anything even after this meeting today, please don't hesitate to reach out to me. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I may. Just so people in the audience can understand, when you say Dooley County is a fiscal agent, Dooley County taxpayers aren't paying any money other than the, whatever would be attributed to the support staff to administer your funds for the state.
Absolutely. We're grant-funded, all of our money comes from.
And so you can't manage that money yourself, it has to go through a governmental entity. And so, so that's what Dooley County does and then you bring this benefit of your one staff and each county, most counties I'm familiar with have one person. And that's paid by a state grant that comes out of federal funds. And then you go and raise or match and find resources and have brought in eightfold that number.
Yes.
Okay. I was in the presentation for the one for Lee County at the city of Leesburg on Tuesday. This is my second this week. And they have very similar presentations with different needs, you know, because of the different dynamics of the county. But one thing that they had was Backpack Buddies. Do y'all have that?
We are, we're hoping to get that this year. We're hoping to do that through Toys for Tots because they're starting to do a Backpack Buddies.
What is that, so people know?
Okay, there's two different ways you can do Backpack Buddies. Backpack Buddies can be done through a church or another organization that sends food home every weekend or every holiday with students. Now, at one point in time, we had several churches here running that, but that, to my knowledge, they're not doing that like they used to. COVID kind of, you know, COVID just shut everything down. But they can also do a basic needs Book Pack Buddies that goes home, that has school supplies or basic toiletries or things like that. So there's two different ways, because COVID, there used to only be the one way with the food, but now there's the two ways, because COVID taught us that these kids need a little bit more support than what we, than what they were getting. But we're trying to bring that back through Toys for Tots.
What I understood was it was kindergarten through maybe seventh grade or eighth grade, and the theory is that there's, there's, there's food for breakfast and lunch provided during the school year. Spring break's going on right now, a lot of places, there's no food. And so they anticipate those needs and also long weekends and stuff like that, sometimes the only food in the family is what goes home with those kids. And the, you know, if you, if you, we have a lot of educators in this room, in particular this table, that understand that an empty stomach, a mind can't focus to learn. And when society, you know, society complains about problems with the education system, if you can't, if you don't have, if you've got a body there that can't focus because they're hungry or they're, they can't bathe, those are the basic needs of what I hear you, you're, you're meeting that need or trying to.
We are, we're trying. And we, we've done a very good job in the last five years of really building those things, because when they started, they were very small, we had a handful of donors that would give things. And we are very good at leveraging what we have. And so we would leverage those items and say, hey, you know, we've managed to raise 40, you know, 40 body washes, I would like to have 80. And we, we leverage those things to bring in more. And we also put all of the things that we do in our annual plan, which is viewed by the federal government and by state government. And that's how some of our funding came to us, is we didn't even have to go look for it. They pulled our annual plan and said, oh, hey, you guys are already doing this, we want to spend some money here. Like we were just awarded $1.5 million in Sanford Bishop's District to focus on early literacy. And we were, our district, one reason he wanted to push that was because we were all already pushing the early literacy so hard. And COVID, the number, we're starting to get our real numbers in now from COVID and they, the reading scores are the lowest they've been since they started testing in like 1969. So we have a huge, a huge learning gap. And it's not just, you know, a lot of people thought that it would just be like the kids that were coming up to like third grade at that point when COVID hit, because that's kind of the key grade. It's not. These are eighth graders that we're testing. These are, you know, 10th graders that are being tested. These are third graders that are being tested, that are just now getting to that precipice. And like I said, the scores, we are in an education crisis right now. So the work in early literacy is so important, but Bert, you're spot on, it's so much more than that. If they don't have basic needs met at home with toiletries or food or things like that, it's very hard to go into a classroom and want to learn. So, you know, we're trying to meet those. And the school has implemented their book bus, which does do food when they deliver and they go out several times a year throughout the summer. So there's lots of programming going, lots of things running, you know, but like I said, any questions that you guys have, we'll be glad to field those and be glad to get you answers back if we don't know them, because Lord knows, I don't know everything. But, but I'll be glad to, to figure it out for you. But was there anything else?
Sounds to me like anything dealing with a state offense where there's grants available, we need to be using you all as resources.
Yes, please do.
Because we're missing a boat.
Please do, because we, we have, even if we're not writing in for the grant, we can be a partner on the grant and they like, they like to see that. They like to see that Family Connection is at the table, that we bring our collaborative power to whatever you're trying to do. And we literally have facets going everywhere, so there's nothing you could really bring to me that we can't find some way to write in for something for it. Because we did that, like with L4GA, we didn't write in for that grant, because we're not able to get that grant, but the school system wrote in for it and we were a lead partner on it. We wrote in several pieces, helped them with things, you know, and then they come to us when they need assistance, you know, distributing books or whatever. So, you know, we're available to write in and help assist with grants, absolutely. Please call on us.
I think Ms. Rhonda may have one little item to change.
One little thing, I know it wasn't on the agenda, but I'm gonna put on my chamber hat for a second. Next Wednesday in Unadilla, the community center, we will host our annual Chamber and Family Connection appreciation and awards luncheon. We want to personally invite each of you to attend, starts at noon, love to have you, lots of fun and good thing. So please join us.
Yes.
Thank you. We appreciate all you guys do.
Let me ask you this, so, so the same meeting that you had, having with us, so you all had to with the school board also?
No, we don't have to, I did go and present to the school board, but I presented to them about the youth mental health. I give you guys a five-year report, because you're my fiscal agent, like I said, I couldn't do the work that I do without you guys. So I came and give you a five-year report. I give my five-year report to the school system through our literacy council. So when our literacy council meets, which is like the school system, everybody that touches literacy within the school, the public libraries, public health, when we have our literacy council meeting, that's where I give my five-year report to them. So, but now, I'm, I mean, I'd be glad to give my five-year report to anybody that wants to hear it, because I love sharing what, you know, what we're doing and, and I love finding new ways to, you know, like I said, leverage the work that we're doing to bring in more money to Dooley County, because we're all about, we're really all about the children and our families here and really making sure that we're kind of bridging those gaps and getting them the services they need and, and really being an assistance. So we're servants, so we don't go wherever and present wherever.
Because there's several of us here have worked in the school system and I did, I never worked nowhere but Dooley County, you know, for 34 years I was a school teacher. But, but, you know, I know what you said is true and, and the foundation is the most important thing, you know, in the early years. And I, I, I think they need all the assistance that they can get now, you know, to try to do that. Why I asked that you all, you know, that you make contact with them, so you never can have enough stuff coming in, you know, to, to help the kids of Dooley County.
If it'll help us, I never turn it down. Like it's just me, but, but we never turn anything down, any help that we can get, because it's hard when, when you've got the same pool of people to ask for everything. You know, y'all know this, y'all get hit a lot for stuff. I mean, it's, it's difficult to, you know, squeeze, squeeze blood from a turnip, pretty much. So when we can find monies outside of here that do not have to be pulled from here, but we didn't have before now, we're all about that. We'll go after grant money all day long, we'll go after in-kind, we'll leverage what we're doing all day long to bring in more monies, like I said, to help our children and families, especially now in the crises that we find ourselves in thanks to COVID. So yeah, absolutely, the school system here is fabulous. They have never turned us down. They are one of our main lead partners and they are all about literacy and what we need to do to help these kids and they are all about wraparound services, so we never have any issues here with our school system wanting to really reach out and help these children. So, but thank you guys so much, I appreciate y'all and I hate to sneak out, but we have another meeting following you guys, so thank y'all so much.
We appreciate you.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Blakely?
Thank you. Thank all of you for having us today. And Governor Kemp had designated April as National Donate Life Month and I have several of our transplant recipients with Steve Owen and this is Shelley, she gave him a kidney and then Rhonda Lester, she's a kidney and pancreas transplant. And of course, I'm a liver transplant from autoimmune hepatitis and I was transplanted in 9/28/2000, so I'll be 23 this year. We thank all of you so much for, well, I have two birthdays now. We all do. And I'll, but thank you so much for doing this course and I brought several things and put out for you at your table and hope you, if you're not a donor, please sign a donor and sign up to be a donor, because it's, you just can't imagine about it. But I thank all of you so much for having us and I don't know if you have any questions about.
It's, it's always interesting to me that where you can use somebody else's organ to, you know, to keep living and by me being a science teacher, it's just amazing. You know, and hats off to you all, I know he took it to death, but I don't think I let it out of my eyesight, you know, to keep, to keep me living, you know, but that's, that is fantastic.
And like you said, Governor Kemp has proclaimed April as Donate Life Month and we have a proclamation here prepared, if you also choose to also declare April as Donate Life Month in Dooley County. So, we need a motion.
A motion, did we do that?
I said.
It has a motion and second. Do we have any other discussion on it?
I have one comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, I just wanted to comment that while we typically talk about donate life in a sign up to be a donor when you pass capacity, there's also a great need for living donors. I donated a kidney to my husband Steve four years ago and have had zero adverse effects on my life. I'd always been healthy, been very blessed and offered to help due to that. So I have always been an advocate for living donors. We only need one kidney, we can function just fine, my numbers are great, perfectly healthy with one kidney. And now the technology, Mr. Barron, has allowed them to do living liver donations as well. Our liver has two lobes, a large and a small, they actually take your large lobe from you and donate it to a person, your body regrows a new large lobe in the recipient, that large lobe grows a new small lobe. So it's quite amazing, quite absolutely fantastic. Right now in the US, there are over 125 people who have not only donated a kidney, but also a portion of their liver. They've donated twice and many of them are altruistic donors who donate to just whoever needs it. I knew my recipient, many donors do not. So I'm an advocate, if you are healthy yourself and would like to be tested to donate, if you know others who have been blessed with good health and would like to be tested to donate, it's the best physical you'll ever receive in your life. And you want to make sure that you are healthy enough to continue with good health after the donation, so.
And there's over 5,400 people in the state of Georgia waiting for some type of organ transplant, because it's over 100 and something thousand nationwide. And kidneys are the most needed.
And you say that's your hood?
Yes.
See, I might be in trouble if I need to sell some. I'm just kidding, I'm just joking, but that's a good thing. Now, I go back to what I said, I see why I told him not to, you gotta, as I say, yeah, that's a blessing right there.
It's an amazing process. It still just blows my mind that they can save it from here, put it to here and it, and it works.
And we can't imagine what we've all had to go through, just to see if we were able to have a transplant. It's absolutely unreal. I told one of my doctors, I said, y'all have not even invented anything that hadn't been done already, you know, so I said, don't be inventing anymore, because we've had enough.
All right. Do we have any other discussion on it before we vote on it? If not, all in favor by the show of hand, and that is, you know, motion.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll get this signed later.
Okay.
Okay. All right, let's get back to the agenda here. Mr. Edwards, Steve Edwards with Waste Management, to you.
Good morning, y'all. My name is Steve Edwards, I'm with Waste Management. And again, I got to say, thank you for your public service. I'm a recovering mayor, I'm okay now, a veteran. It's tough, it's, it's hard, but I truly believe your heart's in the right place, so thank you for your public service. We have been your solid provider for quite some time. During the pandemic, during the labor shortage, we ran into some bumps and I think now service is back on track where it needs to be. Back in May, I talked to Mr. Sanders, Mr. Sanders, about an extraordinary price increase because of what we've been through, which is, again, inflation fueled labor costs. And we've been talking since May of last year and what we're looking at doing is trying to put through an extraordinary price increase during the time of your normal and contracted price increase, which is April 1, you build in a rear, so it can, it can be a catch-up type thing. We're basically asking for 74 cents per home and we're asking for a 4.9% increase for commercial. I shared with Mr. Sanders kind of a comparison of where Dooley County fits with all the other counties and cities in Georgia, and y'all are still on the low end. That's my ask and we work well with Mr. Sanders and Mr. Lynn and also Chris Flynn, who did an audit, and we're trying to tie that audit up and make sure it jives, because y'all need to build what we built and needs to match. And I think that's one last step we're working on. Like I said, we, we've been the provider for quite some time and, and we got good folks working for y'all. It's not easy sometimes on those dirt roads, but we can get through them. And we're very local as well, we're close, we're probably 15 minutes away from y'all both, so. So with that, Mr. Sanders, did I miss anything?
Yeah, you missed it.
Lynn, did I miss anything?
Yeah.
Well, anyway, that's my ask and that's before you this morning, this morning.
Mr. Steve, did you get my message back to dirt road, since he bought it up? About the garbage can on the dirt road? I told the guy to call you.
I had the guy that called.
What road are we talking about?
Down Lily, out from Lily.
Lester Road?
It might have been, where the truck won't go down when it raining.
That's Lester Road.
Okay.
That's probably Lester Road. We took care of his garbage truck. They sent the little truck out to get him, because it rained, if we're talking about the same one.
Yeah, because I think he said that you all gave him two garbage cans, so when it rained, he still would have. he still would have something to put.
Oh, that's Mr. Miller. I know who you're talking about. Okay, different road. I can't think of his road.
Yeah. And I told him, so evidently, I told him he needs to call you.
Didn't call me.
He didn't call me this last time when it rained. But we did contact Waste Management in Cordeale. They do have the little truck running. I made sure of that because I didn't want to get so far behind. And it's Easter holiday. Everybody has family over. So we made sure. We communicated with Angela. And she's wonderful. Contacted Angela down at Waste Management, and she got the little truck running.
Because I told him, you said the Fed eight truck, UPS truck, all of them still continue to run well. They ain't quite as large as that waste truck.
Well, we do have a problem when it rains. When it drizzles sometimes, it drizzles, I begin to cringe at my desk.
It's garbage trucks, very heavy.
Question on this. How far, you say we're on the lower end. What is that spectrum of lower end? How far are we off of the average for the other counties?
You're still below. Loudoun County is twenty dollars a month. Lee County is nineteen. Let's see. Some of the cities in between. Cordeale, I mean, it's hard to kind of compare cities that are very dense to counties spread out. But I mean, I think, Steve, we did about five or six comparisons. Turner County is like a twenty-something.
In those counties, do they handle the collection and the phone calls and all? Or do y'all handle the collection?
We do.
Y'all do.
Well, Steve, the seventy-four cent increase, where does that put us?
Currently for residential, currently our rate effective April one is thirteen dollars and thirteen cent. And the request he's referring to is bump it up to thirteen dollars and eighty-seven cent for residential.
Well, we have to have a price increase.
In the audit you're talking about, we paid, we took the initiative for the audit?
We did on audit. And we did an audit, we attempted an audit now. You would think counting the garbage trash cans would be a simple process. The way we've always done it is we have somebody follow the garbage truck on that day, that whole day, and count the cans. We did that for a two-week period to make sure we got everything. And the number of cans we came up with were several hundred less than what we're billing for.
Meaning?
Everybody don't put their can out every week. A lot of folks put it out every week religiously, but not everybody puts it out every week. So you... There was some discrepancy there. So and we got a look in Waste Management was billing us for more cans than what we're billing for. So that's... So I talked to Steve and I said, you know, we're not going... I don't think, I think it's fair for us to bill, us to pay Waste Management for just the number of cans we counted that was several hundred less than what we're billing for. Because I'm pretty sure if we're billing you, you got a can or else you'd be done saying something about it. So now we got to... So that's what we've done since the audit. We've been paying Waste Management for the number of cans we're billing for. And if we can work together, we'll be glad to try. If there's cans out there that y'all are picking up that we're not billing for, we surely want to know so we can bill them and pay y'all.
We are going on tablet for residential, right? For garbage can tablet. That's helped a whole lot. For those trucks being on tablets, they're on a tablet. When they go to stop at a resident, I know where the truck stops. I can call Angela and I'll say, they called me and they say, well, they didn't pick my garbage up. Well, Angela can go back and she can look at the tablet or she can look at the GPS on the truck. She tell me whether or not they had their can out or because they have a little photo thing or whether or not they did not.
So they'll be calling in when you forget to put your can out and say they didn't dump your can. What I can understand, if y'all had stripped the garbage can in the beginning, right? Right. Okay. Relate to me, between you and Ms. Lynn, in the, you know, in the billing process, like all of them, they're like the audit guy, like all of them are...
That's what we're working on.
Yeah, be coinciding together, you know, and we can come up with an accurate count of billing.
I think with what Ms. Lynn mentioned about technology on the trucks, I think we're almost there. So we know when a truck is stopped and picks something up.
Yes.
And that address corresponds with GPS. And we're going to be able to say, Mr. Sanders, no, you have a can here. We need to start charging. So we're almost there.
And also with commercial, commercial is wonderful too, because I can call her and I can say, they didn't empty my dumpster. Well, she's got a picture of the truck, when the truck picks up the trash and what it dumps into the dumpster, and I can see it on my computer. That's another good thing. But we're working on the residential now for the tablets to be installed and the addressing. We're working with them with Waste Management, getting their addresses there. And then what don't coincide with their tablet, she'll come in, she'll say, well, they don't have a, they don't have a can or these people need a can or whatever. But when Waste Management took over, Dooley County Polycarts were out there. They didn't distribute Waste Management cans. And that's basically what we got a...
That's what you've been finding.
That's what we've been finding. And they had two Polycarts because, you know, people don't want to pick up other people's Polycarts or whatever. But the most carts that we picked up were a few damaged Waste Management cans, but a lot of old Dooley County cans. The older ones that has the bar around the front of it and, you know, still affitated some of it is, the wheels are off or the lids torn off. They were heavier cans. But still, that's what we basically picked. People had two cans because they had an old Dooley County can. So we're working on...
And we'll replace them with the Waste Management can.
Yes, yes, yes. And also, commercial, it took me three months. And Eagleview is wonderful. Took me three months in Eagleview to get Kathleen, after Kathleen left the picture, to straighten out the commercial cans. Yes. And we still find little dicks and pickies and different cans for eight yards instead of four yards. But me and Angela are working together on that. But we basically got the commercials straightened out. Now we're working on the residential, y'all. Once they get the tablets on there, we can find out who has two cans, the truck will tell us or whatever. So we're working all together on that.
So do we need to take action on it today? I think we need to.
I'd like the tablet to see what our total cost is and the difference in the other communities of what we're... What our cost to operate is.
What do you want?
I mean, what do we, what does it cost us in the billing and the auditing and all of that to keep up with it? He says we're on the low end, but we're not apples to apples with other communities.
Okay.
Well, you got an employer out there. Again, she works tirelessly with this stuff every day. Every day.
Well, you say we followed trash cans for two weeks. How much did the audit cost us? I mean, how much other communities don't have to do? Other communities don't get phone calls. They handle all the phone calls.
I wouldn't say other communities don't get phone calls.
They might, but then you turn around, you turn around and call. But I mean, we've got a cost. We've got a cost in keeping the touch where our employees handling the issues and stuff. And I would just, I'd like to see what that, what that number is.
What communities would you like to compare us to?
Well, he, I mean, he's already said the others don't do that. I just want to know what our cost is for us to continue.
What our cost is?
Just what our cost is to continue to handle it throughout the... And if they're at twenty dollars and we're at this.
I'm just running some numbers through my head. Like we're, we're probably talking about approximately thirty-five hundred residential cans right now a month. I don't know how many, I don't know off the top of my head how many commercial dumpsters we're talking about. Less than two hundred, around two hundred.
Around, basically.
Give or take.
Give or take.
Give or take.
You don't, we have a same, the same, there's six municipalities within the county. And we handle it for everyone. Is the price...
Same for everybody.
Same for everybody. Whereas in some other places, like you gave the example of Lee County, Leesburg, the city of Leesburg is much more densely populated than the broad area of Lee County. So they have a lower rate in that county, that city.
I want to say Leesburg is similar to Lee County's rate.
How much is Lee County's rate?
Somewhere in the nineteen range.
Okay, Lee County, Leesburg's rate's in the seventeen rate. They just renegotiated. And had it up.
Couple of dollars difference, yeah.
Yeah, less. And so there was competitive bidding process that brought that down, but it still is in that range. But they're not providing the collection services that Commissioner Nixon is talking about. And so I guess whether you collect or not, I think the issue why we started collecting was we're ultimately responsible for the number of cans.
Well, how we started collecting the money twenty years ago, the cities approached the county and the cities all contracted with the county to do residential and commercial garbage collection. And the county actually performed the service ourselves with our own trucks and our own labor for quite some time. And then got to a point where our equipment was in poor condition. We've been having to make a lot of capital expenditures to update our, you know, decisions. We may have, rather than staying in the actual performing the garbage collection, we beat it out. And at that time, with advanced disposal, contracted them to do the service. We could, we were already set up to do the billing because we were doing the work. So we just continued to do the billing and collecting the money. And contracted with advanced disposal at times to collect, to actually pick up the garbage. And then in the process, Waste Management acquired advanced disposal and just continued on the same operation.
And in Lee County and Leesburg, they do it like y'all. They bill it. The provider collects it. And a combination of who takes the calls in Lee County and Leesburg, a lot of it, I would assume in Lee County and Leesburg, the city and the county would take the front of the calls. So they do it like y'all. And some jurisdictions are different. Some of them, it's where we bill the customer direct. And it just depends on what the city, county wants to do with y'all. But the calls go both ways. They go, some of the land, and our number's written on the cart, they'll call us too.
People get mad about garbage.
It's the craziest thing.
And by that, I mean not just about not being collected or not being collected on time or a holiday and all that stuff. That just puts people over the edge. But the other thing I've seen is when the county started requiring back twenty-five years ago when the landfills issues came about, they had lawsuits in like Mitchell County and other places where people were just suing because they didn't want, they were going to the dumpster all those years. They weren't going to pay for a cart. And people have some real entrenched notions about whether they should pay for garbage disposal in the counties. Whereas in cities, we've always done that. So I get it.
I've seen more and more counties go away from the green box collection centers to curbside service. There was a fight in the very beginning because folks didn't want it. But now you try to take it away from them, it'll bite your tooth and nail.
I think I have gotten cussed out more when the decision was made to require everybody to have a garbage can and bill them over that one particular thing to nothing. But I will say, the majority of the folks that cussed the most a year later come back in and actually admitted that was probably one of the best decisions county ever did.
Have you ever had a green box taken from one location and dumped at a county office?
All right, let's get back on, let's get back on the topic, you can.
We have.
Just running some numbers through my head, I'd say we probably, us administering the solid waste program, if you try to factor in land, plus some expense here for what we do, collecting the money, processing the money side of things. I'm just ballparking it now, but I'm saying probably we probably spending a hundred thousand dollars a year. Now, that's residential and garbage. Remember residential and commercial, because we don't distinguish. Lynn works on residential and commercial. We bill residential and commercially.
And plus another thing like Chris County, Chris County, they pick up their Polycart.
It's two dollars and forty cents.
If they don't pay their bills.
If you pay all of them residential.
Yeah, we don't. But we just...
But you see between those two, then they're delivering cans at road departments, picking cans up.
How often do y'all deliver residential cans?
Very seldom.
Now?
Very seldom now. We have been doing it in the last couple of weeks. And that's one of the subjects I was going to bring up with Steve while I had him here today. They're only servicing us on Wednesday. Shelley's only bringing us cans on Wednesday. Well, I got Highway twenty-seven, for instance, this lady called me, said the big truck took her can down the road. Well, I don't have any cans at my office, don't want any cans at my office because that's my county guy out there having to do y'all's job. But we're only getting serviced on Wednesday. And I think we need two days instead of one day. Because my people can't wait to two weeks to get a trash can. You know, that's my only thing. I do have some behind the building now that the ones we picked up. And Rodney and I went out and deciphered between, well, we could have lit here, we could have tire here, you know what I'm saying? And Lee Roy got out there and put the tires back on. And then Rodney got out there and put tires and lids on. So we do have an extra can every once in a while that our guy will go pick up and he will exchange because if they don't serve us till Wednesday, I don't want my customer going two weeks without a trash can. So that's one thing else.
Y'all basically take care of the screamers.
Yeah, well, yeah, I get screamed at all the time. Yeah, you just don't know.
With the audits and stuff y'all did and making up the cans, can we absorb this in this year's budget? Since we're mid-budget.
Since we're probably, since we're not talking about a full year, probably so. We can absorb it till September, but I'm not going to say we can absorb it next fiscal year without an increase.
What is the next increase on this? What's our contractual next increase?
April one, April of next year.
So you just took an increase this already?
With a CPI increase, which the contract allows April one.
And that was what? That took us to the thirteen?
That took us to thirteen. It was twelve fifty-two. I think it was a four percent, four point something else CPI.
And this is what percentage? Seventy-four?
Yeah, I'm just asking for some extra relief from lifestyle.
Point seventy-four divided by thirteen.
Because we didn't raise rates this past.
That's a five point six percent on the residential.
We did. In two thousand twenty-one, we raised rates.
I'm just asking, is there some way to alleviate this midway to get us to, get us to budget time where we can actually sit down? get us to budget time where we can actually sit down and look at the rates and all that? Because I know we missed another chunk of money because of our census. A couple of months ago. I forgot what dollar amount that was.
Hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, thank you. Oh, so I'm, we can't do anything mid-budget in changing rates and stuff and I. That's, that's my only concern. Dan? Does it, which are one of them?
Uh, garbage has got to continue, I mean, it's a violent part of us. You know, and I think we, we, we still have to stay active in it. To me, that's no different than turning your ambulance service totally over to some third party. I think that's one of the worst things you could ever do, is you lose all control. At least we got some one, our hands still around.
That's right.
Rate comes out to be eight dollars and eighty-eight cents more a year per person. It's not a big number.
So which direction do we want to go in? That's our, that's our, I'm asking.
I make the motion that we, uh, that we grant the increase and get, get the budget. And then we'll have to do what we have to do. By rate structure. You just can't keep kicking the can down the road.
Yeah. You had no second on them.
When does the, when does this contract? This contract goes through next year? Twenty-four, twenty-five?
I don't remember. You want me to look that up?
No, I'm just.
It's like a five-year deal and I.
Thanks, sir, might be, might be.
So you, are you telling us for this increase, we're not going to have a low one other than CPI?
Correct. This is, this is, this is a correction course, based on the past two years of what we've had for it. And it's eight dollars and eighty-eight cents per person. That's all it is, just a correct, corrective action. And we've been talking since May and, uh, you know, if you were to go out for RFPs, that rates will be a lot, lot higher.
I think we've already seen that. But it is tough when you're a small county and you're getting, you get federal money in here. And the same people like yourself that get the federal money, you want a piece of ours. And it's not just you, it's other vendors too. I mean, when this money came out here, everybody wanted some of the counties and cities money.
Especially when that ARPA money came out.
That's what I'm talking about. It was easily made if you could get enough votes at the table. And there was people spending money like drunken sailors, I imagine.
We just wondered, when, when the contract renews, they're going to bring us in line with everybody else. And it, I think that was next year.
I don't remember.
What was the latest that we can?
I'll make, I'll make the second.
Well, you got it, okay. You know that my question then.
I'll make the second.
Okay, has been motioned a second. They say, do we have any other discussion on it?
We're going to continue to look at it though, still, right?
Well, yeah, we gotta stay, we gotta stay right on top of it, you remember?
Well, I mean, they, we, we, going back, we, we have had hellacious service problems. I know they're fixed now, but these two years you're asking us help on, those two years were awful. I mean, y'all, our phone calls rang off the hook, garbage wasn't getting picked up. I mean, y'all didn't fulfill your contract those two years.
Didn't find my work.
But you're asking us to make up for it now.
We have suffered for the past two years, we're back on track now.
I mean, that, that's just what, what I'm, y'all, we do a lot of the heavy lifting. And that's not riding a contract.
That's all I had.
You have a ten minute thing you want to add to that?
I'm neutral. I'm good. All right. All in favor by the show of hands? Motion, Harris.
Y'all are great East Coast guys.
Hold nobody now.
Got a lot of trades coming in.
Let's go back to. All right, item two, we'll hope to have the financial report for the month of March available at the next meeting. Item number three, we still have a vacancy on the Board of Health. Keep that on the agenda until someone has found to fill that vacancy. Item number four, in regard to the opioid lawsuit that the county is a part of. I believe Attorney Gregory has, there's some up.
Um, there are four or five, um, of the vendors that want to enter into settlements. And, um, we have a resolution prepared that would authorize me to sign on behalf of Dewitt County to authorize our attorneys that we've already contracted with to enter into those settlements that have been negotiated. Um, on, collectively on all our behalf, we don't have really any say in what those are other than we have to either agree with or not agree with it, and it's in our benefit to agree with it. Um, and so I'm asking y'all to appoint me or anyone you want to that will go through and sign to get us in line to start receiving payments on about four or five other, uh, vendors.
Give it to him.
Yes, we need a motion. And I, I, I fully support him being named to represent to sign off on that.
I so moved Mr. Harris that we appoint Mr. Gregory to, uh, sign off for us.
That's it.
Has been motioned a second, I'll.
And in layman's terms, what this is saying is, the, you know, we said that, that they've offered settlements, they're not offering just settlements just to Dewitt County, it's for the class action lawsuit. The nationwide lawsuit that we're just a very small part of. So it ain't like he's going to be negotiating the rent of a Walmart or, or whoever, so. It's, 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 either we agree to be part of that settlement or we try to take them on ourselves and we don't want that, so.
We'll only come out with a meeting.
That'll be fine.
Well, what I was thinking about doing is getting the paperwork, when I have the authorization, just go to Walmart down there and just say, look, hey, this money's coming, would you go ahead and advance us supplies?
All right, all right. Okay, Steve, I got the message. All in favor by the show of hands?
Okay. I'll get your signature on that, end of the meeting, Mr. Chairman. Item number five, uh, we still have a vacancy on the Middle Flint Behavioral Healthcare Community Service Board.
Okay, that's the one with, I thought we filled that.
Well, Mr. Barrett has somebody that was interested that was going to sit in on the next meeting. And I have, I'm not hating anything, I haven't heard from her.
She, she was, sir.
She is? Are you making that as a motion?
Yeah.
And her name was?
Mina Harper.
Mina Harper.
Yeah, I'd second Mr. Jim.
All right. Mina Harper, that's from Barrett slash.
All in favor by the show of hands? And that is, that motion's hit.
Okay. All right, I'm still working on something on the salary study to present to y'all, I hope to have it at the next meeting. We've had it on the, on the agenda last several times, we have a, a section of Jalapa Road is currently closed due to an issue with a, some pipe have washed out under the pay road. Just to remind everybody, going from Byronville back toward, you know, do a little Highway two thirty, Jalapa Road cuts across, goes through Doubling and comes back over here, back on Highway ninety. It's that section right there is closed. Our engineer has done some preliminary work estimate and he prepared, he's saying, a box covered, which would be the first choice to repair it, approximately three hundred thousand dollars, but he's getting, he's getting up additional details, I don't have it yet, so we'll have it at the next meeting. That's going to be an expensive repair.
And I had a lady go down that road, she was from out of town, but she was coming to Byronville and said, can I do something for me? Said, didn't you know the road was out? I said, yeah, I did. Well, I went down that road trying to get to Byronville. And, uh, so I'm asking this, do we have, is a sign at the beginning of the road that should indicate local traffic on, you know, that?
I'm thinking so, but I'll check and make sure.
And then, you know, I see him going down there, won't put the blame on me, but, uh. Yeah, I saw.
Okay, item number eight, just a reminder, we're, we're currently seeking applicants for the following positions, Finance Director for the Commissioner's Office, Motor Grader Operator for Road Department, Escavator Operator for Road Department, Equipment Operator for the Road Department, and a Tax Appraiser One position at the Tax Assistant Office. Have we gotten many applicants, Linda?
Even when I went to help to the job fair yesterday, that was a poor turnout, I might have picked up maybe like two or three applications. And I feel bad that there were several other who didn't stand to, the floors of that fair.
All right, item number nine, just a reminder, the River Valley Regional Commission has scheduled their annual legislative luncheon for ten-thirty on Wednesday, May the twenty-fourth in America's. So keep that on the agenda. Spring Hill Road, that's the road I showed y'all the video on last month, last meeting. That's coming apart now in the very southeast corner of County. That runs between Chivettville and Highway two fifty-seven. Our engineer's done some preliminary work on that and he's estimating the repair on that is one point eight million. So.
They're going to go to a wheelcar can, right?
Yes, sir.
I said that be it, they're going to go to a wheelcar.
Yeah.
Did we get in touch with the guy at DOT?
DOT, we were waiting for them to do, they were going to do, uh, an estimate.
What's the name of the guy you said? Around there that day?
The money guy?
Uh-huh.
He's, he has been promoted. The, the lady now that's the money lady is Brandy Spillers. Soon as we get, my thoughts was, soon as we get the report from the folks we met with out there, that I was going to contact her and see what kind of financial assistance we could get.
She out of bounds.
No, so she, I ain't believe out of Thomas, because we're out of, we're in the Thomas district, so. We'll keep y'all informed on that. Yodilla EMS station, discussed it last meeting. Looking at, we're looking for a new site for the Yodilla EMS headquarters. Uh, I've gotten Glenn Lason to prepare some estimates. Glenn, come on up if you would. He looked at the proposed house in Yodilla. And just a short version of the story to bring everything up to the way Don Wiltshire, our EMS director, would like to have it. Cost, estimated cost to be a hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars to, to use that house as a site. If we chose to just build a totally new metal building on some existing land that the county may have in the vicinity, estimated that cost to be a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. If you wanted to add an enclosed garage on that facility, that would cost up to two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars. So this here sort of shows you the three proposals, the house remote, I call the house remodel, just a new building and a new building with a garage, and this is how those costs broke down, and I've got y'all a copy of this. I sent, I mailed all y'all a copy of this out, but just in case you didn't, I don't have it with you. They want to know them passing around this, I made an extra copy of just this one page. So. I'll stop there and let y'all ask any questions or.
Is that, uh, man, is that new building? Is that doable? I, I, I hear people talking about, they can't get people to even come bid on buildings now.
It, it is doable, the way I approach this is, uh, having the county act as a contractor versus hiring a contractor. And then we hire individual specified, uh, people, and I spoke to everybody. Uh, I went to the trouble, I, I've actually drawn up a set of plans for a new structure uh, with, with a garage, I have all the plans, if you'd like to see a copy, can get you a copy of that. But, uh, I took that and I met with several people and they're over weeks. And to get prices for each item breaking down, and that's where the prices are breaking down, to get those prices. So kind of looked at it a little different, rather than trying to get a contractor, because the contractors are just hiring these guys out, which all of them go through my department anyway, when they're permitting. So I had the advantage to contact them, I, I did contract contractors, I didn't want to take away something from them. And they were okay with me communicating with their subs, uh, some of them are just independent people anyway. And I got the, the, the numbers were not very far off from one another, so those are rounded off numbers from each level, talking to all the, uh, specific contractors for each department there, so you could figure out what was what. And it is doable, so basically what it is, is the profit that the contractor would make, we could, we could eliminate that if we were to handle each level of it, and that is where I come. I do have that expertise background because I was a senior project manager, uh, many, many, uh, decades. And I was used to handling this kind of, this type of construction before. I became the, uh, building official and zone administrator here.
What do we give for the house, sixty odd?
Sixty-two five.
Sixty-two five and one fifty-two.
Two twenty, two fifteen.
The new construction will be slab on grade. Um, and that's why there's not an ADA, everything would be built ADA to start with, so you got a slab on grade. Whereas versus the other one is already on a foundation. There's a lot of, uh, renovation, a lot of water damage on the floor joists and, uh, that have to be reconstructed inside, in addition to completely refabulating the bathrooms.
Is there, uh, any question at all that we can get what we paid for this house?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, the market, you can, it may come out even better.
Depending on how we have to, I don't know how we have to do it as a county, but yeah, I, I know the how.
All you have to do is declare it surplus property and then sell it.
But you have to sell it by public auction or sealed bids. You just can go negotiate with somebody, it'd have to be a public auction or sealed bids, is my understanding.
It has to be open to public, but whether or not you did it with it.
You say that, you gave for that bill, that house?
Sixty-two five.
There are some, uh, the roof does leak pretty heavily when it rains. So, uh, there would need to be a disclosure, of course, when you walk in it, you'll see the entire living room floor is completely.
But you said again, proposal, proposal two or proposal one, all of these is us hiring a licensed contractor?
No, contractors are horrible, not one person overseeing it. I would oversee it and get each, each individual contractor. I would oversee it and get each, each individual contractor to handle that.
But if something messes up, who do we, who do we go?
Who's your general contractor with liability?
We don't have anybody to go back on. We just ran into this at the rec field. Who do we have to go back on this?
I, I don't understand your question.
If something goes wrong, if it's not done correctly or whatever.
Something's not done, well, each, each contractor, specific contractor, they would be liable for each level of it. So whereas you hold a general contractor for everything inside of the general contractor causes plumber, he causes electrician and so on. So in other words, you're just eliminating the general contractor and each one of the individual subcontractors would be responsible for each level.
Well, typically when you bid something out um, from a county and you have it and you, you take on a contractor to do it, you require them, and you're required to have them either bonded or um, have their, and also have their general liability coverage, certificate of insurance and a certificate of workers' compensation. So that it's very clear that those things are factored into that price that you're paying.
An insurance company not guaranteeing the work.
No, not guaranteed the workmanship.
And that's where David's headed with workmanship. Something's wrong. It wasn't done right.
Well, I mean, again, we just, a month ago, we just had the same thing happen. And there's no, there's no recourse. Live with it and make a new deal.
Other than you don't use them anymore, you learn from them.
Well, my thing about that is, you know, since he's a building inspector and he's serving as a general contractor. Now I can see where you're gonna say, I'm, I'm into this here, you know, so I understand where everybody coming from. But uh, if you, they're inspecting every job, you know whether it's gonna work or not anyway. I, I mean, you, you already, it's just them shady characters that, and then I, I wouldn't hire, I wouldn't let nobody bid on a job unless they got a state license. And now here's the repercussion behind it. Now, if you ain't got no state license, then you, I mean, you probably can do something to them, but it won't be a whole lot. But a joker ain't gonna wanna lose that state license if he gotta eat off of it every day. So, so now if he gonna eat off that license every day, he gonna make sure it's right. Cause that license is worth a whole lot of money to him.
Yes, sir.
And uh, and uh, so, you know, if, if, if we, if we did, if that happened at the rec field, that's because we did not hire people that, you don't wanna, the only thing you gotta do is call making. That's all you gotta do. And they go right to work on that contract with them license. Not why the whole issue is to have a, a license contract. Now, you know, I just don't know how we gonna do it with, with you start requiring workman comp and bond and all that kinda stuff. That's a whole different animal right there. And that's the whole, you know, you talking about now, and I know this for the protection, but this also drives up the price too. Yeah, I mean, you ain't gotta tell, I mean, I know. And uh, and uh, so. Yeah, it's, so, yeah, if, if, if you gonna be the general contractor, and that's the way I prefer doing it anyway, cause if you go there not being a general contractor, they think you're too high. And, and you just be the general contractor and you gonna say uh, on this project right hand, the county fifteen or twenty thousand dollars. You know, it, it'll be worth your while, it'll be worth, I can't why uh, uh, direction to go, you know, with you and let you oversee it. So if something don't go right, then we can look at you.
Yes, I understand. And uh, and that's the one thing, when I, when I, Steve approached me, he was saying, is there ways that we can do it? I said, as an alternative, because I have the expertise and I have the access to all the uh, people that are in, in Dooley County that are licensed that are on, we have a registration in the Dooley County permit access that they uh, have to register. And so I have all their information if there's, and there are, there are some that I would not call. I have trouble with them at every inspection. I know, I know when they're gonna come. I know what the problem's gonna be before I get there. I wouldn't even call those guys. But there are several fellows I would be happy to in Dooley County to get them to work and to uh, so that feeds back into Dooley County. And uh, the intent is, as an employee of Dooley County, we would save that uh, overhead cost that a general contractor would do. If you're open to that, I'm willing to do it with the pleasure of the commissioners.
I mean, I, I, I would, I wouldn't have no problem with you overseeing it, cause I know how you inspect it. I know how you inspect it anyway. I wouldn't have a, I mean, person to speak, I'm just speaking for me.
Okay.
Cause I'm in the field, I mean, you know, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't have a reason.
I don't know what the rest of them.
When is the board leaning toward doing the house remodel or a new building?
I'm not favoring a new build.
I don't think you can sell that.
We can make some money off of it anyway.
Make money off that house with the savings with him being the contractor and go with the new building with the garage. You, you've got offset two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars.
With the garage?
Yeah, that would include a uh, forty by thirty four bay garage so that they could pull the ambulances inside of it. It would be attached to the structure. Uh, it's, the, the structure itself is eight foot tall, the garage is fifteen foot tall, so that they can pull the ambulances inside.
What are they in now?
Pardon me?
What are they in now?
Uh, they have a carport that they're in.
Do they have?
Oh, they don't have, they not in anything up there. In Yodilla, it's just a shed.
Metal carport. Now, don't, I'd question whether we need a four bay gar- garage.
I don't think we'd ever grow to that. Could, could it be built in a way that you could come back and add that at some point?
We don't have to put doors on, but we could frame it and finish it so that they can be put on at a later date.
Yeah, I think.
That, that in itself, uh, the garage doors are very expensive. Uh, they're almost six thousand dollars a piece. So that would, that would save that much on the price times four. That is.
Yeah, what are we gonna do with what we have now? Isn't that the same thing?
As far as what, what do you mean?
That, the metal building they're under now.
The shit.
The shit, that can't be.
What they fall up in it now?
That's the same thing they fill in and make those garages out of.
If it can be disassembled and relocated and reused, I have no problem with it. I didn't look at that in, in the figuring, so I would have to take a look at it.
As long as they're not attached, I don't know how they did the, the foundation part of the, the melopole, cause that's all they got. You know, I don't know.
It's not permanently attached to anything.
Bolted in the ground.
That's what I was asking, I hadn't looked at it, so.
I had figured it with a monolithic pour, there would be a continuous pour, the uh, structure for the housing as well as the garage would be one continuous pour um, with stress cuts to relieve because of the size of the capacity. And then uh, with a small drive entering and exiting the, the area as well as the ADA access, cause you're all building up there.
Is the proposed site for the build in the city limits?
It is. It's, it's the, the area that I uh, I, I actually asked Brandon and uh, what would be one of the better places? And he had mentioned that there's the sheriff's annex, which is over up there. And we went and looked at the site. I recommended bringing in some dirt to, to raise it up some, just to, to prevent any chance of flooding. And then uh, I spoke to Rodney about that and he said it wouldn't be any problem to bring it in and pack it. So we've got the resources to get the initial going. So you, you're saving all the costs for your uh, land and such as that. So there's, there's quite a bit of, that I was gonna use, it's in the existing county. I'm planning to be able to use that area.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
You trying to say something?
Oh, okay.
I was just gonna comment, we found out with our fire stations that you don't never want your vehicles coming out the gable end. Uh, have them coming out under the E, because if you got in the future, it's easier to add on because you don't have a odd roof line. And all you gotta do is just add on to the building. So you could build a two-car garage now. If you come out under the E, it is simple to add on to more. Ten years from now, fifteen years from now, whatever. But if you've got that gable, they're coming out underneath that gable, it, it's, it's more difficult to, to, and it makes your building look odd, so.
That's the floor plan. Um, thank you Kenny for that. I did anticipate that. You can see where I have it drawn, that the uh, doors and stuff, they are coming out on the wall, not on the gable end.
Does anything gotta be moved uh, first from now, where you're talking about building it at? The trailer would have to be moved?
No, it, it will actually fit without relocating the trailer, but I've heard that the sheriff plans to move the trailer, so. I don't, I don't know, but we've got room. I did check that. I measured it out and we, we can fit it in without a problem.
Okay, Brandon.
Uh, so according to the sheriff, build it in the back far corner where the single wide is. But he does have plans of moving the single wide. Would we build there or you looking at building over there to the right?
Yes, sir. When you pull in to the far right side of the uh,
The front, the front right?
Yes, sir, front right.
What are we talking about here? I'm lost. Help me out.
Collins Road goes south.
I was not seeing Collins Road.
I think there's two acres there.
Okay.
You see the large open area?
Is there currently a septic tank there?
Pardon me?
Isn't there currently a septic tank there?
Uh, it's city, city sewage, so it's just a connection. On the floor plan, I did um, anticipate future growth of an additional overnight room. So one of those rooms can be divided, which is the weight room, and it can become a bedroom at a later time without any additions. So you'll be able to add staff without having to modify the room for the future. That's the house in.
Is that one of the two fifty?
Uh, go down to the EMS three D four plant, Steve.
But we gonna cut, we gonna cut. So it gonna be.
Right. So still we have, oh, yeah, he got a plan up on there, uh, okay.
This is the first, now that's still, let's see.
How long it gonna take to sell that building, that house, Dave?
I don't know. I, I hate we, I know we made that decision. I, the, the house sitting in, I mean, it needs some work, but it's, it's having to bring up to all of our standards that's driving this so high. I don't have, I don't have any doubt we can get our money back out of the house, but.
At any time.
And then after you put a hundred and fifty-two thousand more in it, you still gonna have a nineteen fifties house.
Yeah. It's almost like doing firework when you had to tear out and then build back.
Yeah, well, I said, we weren't under the impression that we had to do that extensive of a upgrade. But I, I'd still like to keep, I mean, I'd still like to keep the project under the two hundred thousand with that proposal two. And I mean, again, I, I get the enclosed garage, but just because we're, we're building something new, that mean we have to upgrade everything. What we have has worked. I don't see why we can't attempt to.
Well, that's bigger than us, four bay.
And I don't see why we can't continue to attempt to use what we've already paid for, but uh.
That's why I broke it apart. I've had just a garage and with, with and without the garages in the uh, there you go, a hundred and ninety without the garage. You got two fifty-seven. As uh, Commissioner Casey asked about the garage bay doors. Of course, they're, they're lower at twenty-four thousand dollars basically, by not putting the doors on, just having it an open area through there.
But proposal two doesn't have any of that on the end.
Correct.
You, you can go where you shelter, you shed like down here.
Like we got.
Like you have up there.
But they don't have a full, they got the same thing here as they do up there, except this one's fully.
It's got sides on it. One of Yodilla doesn't have sides on it.
But those, just same thing, they, you add those accessories when you used to buy those metal buildings, you put the frame on the sides and you put the thing on the back. I, I just don't.
I think they'd be happy with a new building.
What y'all wanna do?
I'll make a motion if you're ready for it, but. You might not be.
We wanna hit it just, before you make the motion, what, what you got in your mind?
I, I'm for proposal number two. At the hundred and ninety thousand.
That's without the.
Without the, try to, I mean, what we got, share what we got, get them in a new facility and go from there.
That's one of mine from two fifty-two, what, two, two fifty-two, two fifty-seven, that's uh, two fifty-seven.
Well, two fifty, but take away twenty-four thousand if you don't put the doors on. I have, I have the doors included in that price, so it'd be twenty-four thousand less. So we, we would build the entire structure ready for doors. If you wanted, everyone to put doors on it, it, it could be done at a later date. It may be a little bit higher at a later date, but that was the price that I've gotten.
Well, to me, if you were even gonna, you didn't ask me, but if you're gonna consider a garage, I don't see the need for a four bay garage.
That's bigger than us.
Seven ambers we go in that, that speed. Okay, and that's probably, it gonna be that for a while. So if we were with a two bay garage, how, how big you say that garage is right there?
Thirty by forty.
That's two thousand square.
The, the building's forty feet wide and the, the living structure's fifty-four inch, forty, fifty-four feet long. So I just put it at the same width. Doesn't have to be. We can make it smaller. When I was talking to uh, Don, I was getting the impression now, so I was, I was doing a lot based off impressions from people who use this. They wanted the space to be able to pull in. They want a uh, thirty amp electric on the wall, be able to plug into it and to be able to service around it without any trouble. So that's kinda why I said, well, might as well go ahead and go with the full length, cause your ambulance is roughly twenty, is it? So I was assuming twenty-five to thirty foot, give you enough room to walk around front and back and sides. That's how I came up and I said, I might as well just keep it the same, same in line. But that's open to discussion. That can be, that can be tweaked.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
One thing that, just thinking down the road, if there's some hesitation on putting the garage on there, this building could easily be added on to later. And if you have a splash project in the future, adding an item for ambulance service on that valid agenda would have a lot of bang for your buck.
They owe it every time anyway.
Right, there you go. So you could do it in phases, is what I'm hearing. Just a thought.
Somebody else's money. Still a taxpayer.
Well, Dad, get me ready for your motion there, man. Just for the building.
I'll make a motion that we go with proposal number two for a hundred and ninety thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars for the cost for a new metal building on the county property off of Collins Road.
Okay, it has been a motion accepted. Do we have any other discussion?
I've got a couple things. Um, so he gonna be the general contractor. So that mean that he ain't getting paid no, no money for doing this?
Yeah, I'm not.
Right? I mean, like, I don't wanna come up later on, we, we get a bill from him saying. Right? I mean, like, I don't wanna come up later on, we, we get a bill from him saying, you know, for my expertise, our choice, you know, okay. That understood.
That's a fair question. And, and I discussed this with Steve. Act as, act as a general contractor, but I, I would still keep him in role as, and pay just as it is. So that would help, in, in essence, it would save you over twenty percent of contractual fees and stuff.
That's why I say it would save fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. I, I got what you're talking about. We don't want no, no little small print stuff down there.
Yeah, yeah.
Tell them before we vote on it.
Oh, I'm good. Yeah. I hope they leave it off. We can, we can make an add.
Anybody else before we give our blessing on it? That's it? I mean, y'all, I thought maybe y'all want that. Okay. All in favor by the show of hand?
You got it.
Yes, sir.
Do we want to vote to declare the house surplus now or think about that later?
Hold up, don't, we're still holding.
Do you think, do you think it's right to ask them first if they want it back? They don't want it back. They don't want it back. So I'm gonna want to think, them to think, oh, we, we, we jive them, you know, just to get their building. Okay.
So we need a motion on the floor for that?
If y'all prepared, if you're prepared to go ahead and declare it surplus.
Offer the motion, we declare the house surplus.
That's it.
They have the motion as second. Before we vote on, are there any other discussion on it? So they gonna go on surpluson.gov?
We'll have to decide what PropTech COB is.
And you gonna discuss it with them, you said, you, you know they don't want it back, but you still gonna.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All in favor by the show of hand? That is unanimous.
On, on another note, I don't, I don't know if y'all saw it, but House Bill four, that was four fifty-six or something like that passed. And we will not be required to pay ambulance fees to operate our ambulances. I think we had budgeted eight thousand dollars a year. I think it was eighty-one hundred dollars. But that passed this last legislative session. I'm made darn aware that he particular, so he's got eight thousand more dollars. I think it'll be in the new budget.
All right, I don't know twelve, just a reminder, the engineer for the city of Pinehurst is advertising for proposals for the installation of a sewage grinder in front of the justice center. Bids will be open at three o'clock on April the twentieth at Pinehurst City Hall. Out of number thirteen, Dooley County High School Boys Basketball Team recently won the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three GH, GHSA Region for Class A Division Two Championship and actually made it to the Elite Eight of the state playoffs. I took the liberty of preparing a resignation proclamation honoring those. And I, there's a copy of this was sent out with the agenda and that shows you the players, the coaches and the managers. They couldn't be here today. They're on spring break and somewhere you know, coach, like he probably might not be able to get very many players to show up here on spring break. But I thought if, if y'all are in agreement with this, go ahead and officially adopt it now. If we'll work out a time to maybe try to get them to come by, if, if y'all are so interested in doing this.
I so moved, Mr. Chairman.
Has been motioned as second. All in favor by the show of hand? That's carried. Motion carried.
And then out of number fourteen, the Fulton Academy Girls Basketball Team recently made it to the final game of the Georgia Independent Athletics Association Class A Championship. That came short. We're, we're in the championship this year, but in here again, that's prepared a proclamation for the players, coaches and support staff. If y'all are so, and they're getting, they happen to be on spring break this week also, so.
I make a motion that we give this proclamation as second.
Has been motioned as second. All in favor by the show of hand and that motion carried.
And unless y'all object, I've got where the computer puts y'all's signature on those proclamation, but if y'all insist on signing them.
No.
Okay, I don't know if fifteen more took care of that. Take care of that sixteen. Seventeen, just reminded Mars County Holiday for Employees for Good Friday. It's a real good Friday.
Lot of holiday.
Uh, I'm number eighteen. Uh, New York County Commissioners Office Issues Alcoholic Beverages to license, licenses to businesses in the unincorporated area. As a part of the process, the county conducts fingerprint-based background checks through the Georgia Crime and Information Center. And the GBI performs biennial audits of this process. And they notify me they're coming later this month to do our audit of our records. And they have to, to, in preparation, they have added a requirement since the last time we were audited. So we need to update our applicant privacy rights notification policy. Basically, that's just another piece of paper we had to give the applicant when they apply for the license. Letting them know, hey, you're, by doing this, you're agreeing to allow us to access your criminal background and you understand that. So I need, what do I need? And, and they, they give, they, they provide, the GBI provides the format for the policy. So I just need y'all, if y'all would, just to officially adopt the applicant privacy rights notification policy per the GBI's recommendation for Doody County.
I so moved just with all of you did see. They have the motion as second. All in favor by the show of hand? That motion carried also.
Where, where's, um, who was the person that applied for this? Where is the location? Do you know? Applied for the bill last.
No, nobody's applied.
Oh, nobody applied? Yeah. Oh, I thought somebody.
GBI comes around and audits our process and all of our records.
I thought somebody had.
No, no, nobody, nobody's applied. No, no. This, we're just up, we're just updating our policy manual, which is a three-ring binder of documents we have to have in place to, that GBI comes by and always make sure we're doing everything accordingly.
That's what I look for too. I didn't see that, so.
We currently don't, we don't, we don't issue many. Is it still ours? The campground in the northeast corner of the county is in.
Campus Haven.
Wait, there is this on.
And the Campus Haven. Yeah, past Pinehurst Tribal Center.
Why don't we look at business license out in the county?
It's been kicked around several times. I've no actions been taken.
People always call and.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, that, that don't make sense.
I've said, but it's hard sometimes as a vendor, when you're, when you're in a business and you're trying to get to, to sell, when you're trying to buy stuff from a vendor, they ask for several things and one of them is a business license. And then you have to, you have to come up with affidavits and.
Over the years, we, we're constantly being contacted by folks, I had, can you provide me a letter stating that the county does not provide, does not require business license in the unincorporated area? Well, but it's gonna have to be somebody that's gonna admit it. Who's gonna, who's gonna be in charge of? That's why Steve ain't here. Who's gonna do it?
And I'm not even worried about Steve, which is I, I am. Whatever the thing is for the piece of paper, it's just knowing what.
I think the benefits would weigh out. And you gonna get, you gonna get pushback from, the little lady's got a barber shop in the backyard. Salon, excuse me, salon or whatever.
Maybe you structured in that manner like you do.
And we've looked, we talked about it, but we just, that never, do y'all want to? Get some sample, there's different ways you can structure the fees.
Can we look at Chris County's sample of what they?
I'll try and get that.
Some people do about how many employees you have, right? Like. Yeah. Forty dollars for one, eighty dollars for two, whatever.
The best argument came about when we had that little place up at, at exit two, one twelve that was selling the molded food and the state couldn't get in there, shut them down, but we had a business license, we could have called the business license. But it gets that enforcement too, is what Steve's saying. You know, when you have a problem, we're already having that problem with some of our zoning or, you know, land use stuff that we're dealing with now. And so we've got, whoever you did code enforcement would also probably be doing that, you know? Um, and that's where the regulatory comes in. It's when, you, you don't need it until you need it. I think you needed it before you had it.
Didn't that an ordinance base?
That's a simple process to do. Now you're gonna have to exempt out, you know, farm operations if that's what you want to do or not. So you got, you got some considerations that maybe a one-size-fits-all doesn't, you need another rural county that has a good farming population. You know, because, you know, what, what constitutes as a business on a farm and what's farming, what's not. I mean, that's a gray area. Just be aware of that.
All right, moving along. Number nineteen, Mr. Bob Natacow is the District Court Administrator for the Eighth Judicial Administrative District. He has submitted the funding request package for the Courtial Judicial Circuit for FY twenty-three to twenty-four. And it's the same, there's no increase in their funding request over the current year. Superior Court asking for fifty-six thousand dollars from Dooley County for juvenile court, twenty-five thousand in the data exchange project. Six thousand for a total of eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars.
Is this not population based? Then why didn't ours decrease?
That's a good question.
Because I mean, we've, we've lost, we've lost some revenue. I thought we were supposed to give us some expenses too in terms of population based stuff. And no other county in this took the decrease that we took. Unless everybody else has increased because they had such a, a.
What I think you should do is ask him to revisit the formula based on, you know, what better?
Maybe inquire what the formula leaves first.
There it is, right there. What's our population?
Cost each county fifty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-four.
That's our county.
I know.
Right, but how many, what's our population? None of the census.
That went down, didn't it? That ain't accurate, is it?
Wait, that number said fifty-six. What was the other?
Fifty-six for Superior Court, twenty-five thousand for Juvenile Court and six thousand for the data exchange was eighty-eight thousand. They're saying our population's eleven thousand, two hundred and eight. Does anyone think that's right or wrong?
I don't believe it.
I think that's.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's the census.
That's the new number. It went from fourteen to.
But that's a.
They made that adjustment last year.
But they're the ones that need the court circuit the most, aren't they?
Dooley and Wilcox do need the Superior Court in the data exchange because of all the habeas stuff. But we, on the flip side of that, we benefit from having an extra judge with a secretary, with a law clerk, with two, three eighty-eights for that judge and two, well, two public defenders in the whole circuit. Because we wouldn't have the extra judge if we didn't have those two prisons. So the state's pumping a bunch of money in here too.
I'm not challenging the number. I'm just making sure that it's, maybe the cost of operating all this went up and we just leveled out. But if that's the case, then the other county should have.
All right, I've got. Our current year funding was also based on us having a population of eleven thousand, two oh eight. So I need to try to go see what the previous year's funding. File center, county departments, judges budget. Let's just go to Superior Court. Funding request, two years ago. Yeah, two years ago, our funding was based on a population of fourteen thousand. Last year, they adjusted it to eleven thousand, two oh eight. So, so we, we, we got our.
Did the total cost of operation go up?
We got. Now, see, two years ago, we were paying a total of a hundred thousand dollars. It took, two years ago, the total cost was four, was four hundred and forty thousand dollars. So it's gone. The total cost has gone up ten thousand dollars. But our portion has gone down twelve thousand dollars. Okay, yeah.
So we saved, we saved some.
And we started saving it last year. They adjusted our population last year. We all lost people.
Or didn't get counted.
All right, so back to the request. Y'all ready to take action or you need additional information or what?
Oh, we ready. I make a motion, Mr. Chairman. Are there any other discussions?
Motion to approve the request on the. Who made the second? All right.
All in favor by the show of hand? That motion carried.
Okay, I don't know twenty, I just wanted to mention this. Couple of months ago, Joseph Willis come to us and said he wanted to start a track program for the rec department. And it's the first time doing it. Make a long story short, he was trying, he kind of reached out to folks to see if some other department might want to let us participate in the meet. Wound up got a contact with not the head person at the Warner Robbins, City of Warner Robbins track, but a, sort of an assistant. And when, yeah, Joseph sent me this email. Let me know that, that, and Joseph been, the Warner Robbins rec department been a little backwards to help us. They invited our team up there for three different meets. And got, gave the kids opportunity to participate in a real track meet and everything. And I just thought it'd be nice. We sent the mayor a letter thanking him for letting us participate.
If you thank him and tell him, don't come take no hat.
Oh, so you say there might have been an ulterior motive, huh?
I'll tell you what I know.
Well, see, I didn't get that part in.
They never said tell you that part.
But I still think we ought to send.
Let's tell them hands off.
Okay, and along that same line, Joseph came by yesterday. And through another contact he's made to record, somewhere down around, I can't remember what county, what, where it was, somewhere around Waycross. There was a locally owned sports goods store that gone out of business. The, the owner had died and his wife, anyway, back on his work. And the, the rec guy down there knew about it. And the, the rec guy down there knew about it and asked Joseph what colors was Dooley County? And he told him marine and gold. And that Joseph and Dexter went down there yesterday and loaded the van up with brand new jerseys, some, some practice jerseys. He said probably about ten thousand dollars. That they just gave.
Free?
For free.
That's all right, yeah.
So I asked her to get us some info. Get, get us some contact information and we'll be glad to send them a letter thanking them also.
Anything you can help them tax wise or any letter like that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Just, just. So, okay, I'm number twenty-one. I'll take care of the audits. The middle, uh, where's the next? I'm twenty-two, Middle Georgia Regional Solid Waste Management Authority, which is a joint authority with Dooley County, Macon County, and Peach County. It got started almost twenty-five years ago. It was formed, the three counties went together, adopted a resolution creating the authority. And it initiated, was going to last, the initial term was for twenty-five years. So coming up later this year, the authority expires or we need to take action to renew it. The time of call, when the authority's attorneys prepared the documents, basically for each of the three counties, just to renew it for another twenty-five years on the same terms. And currently it's not costing Dooley County anything. The, just remind y'all, the, the, the authority owns a facility in Macon County that is adjacent to the closed Macon County landfill. The facility consists of a, a scale house, the scales, a metal building that's a tipping station for, that currently can excel, oh, right now currently all the waste is dumped in the tipping, in the transfer station and hauled to some other camp, some other landfill that we've leased it all out to a company out of, really out of Alabama. But there, we get a portion of the tipping fees that they, that they generate. But, so anyway, I recommend, you know, I'd like a motion for us to adopt the resolution renewing the Solid Waste Management Authority for another twenty-five years.
I make a motion. We renew the authority.
Let's see. Have the motion in second. I'd have any discussion on it before we hold on.
I forgot to mention Commissioner Lester and myself, East County, Dooley County has two members on the authority. Macon County has three members on the authority since they're the host county. And Peach County has two members on the, on the authority. And Commissioner Lester and myself are Dooley County's representatives on the authority.
All in favor by the show of hand. That motion carries.
And one thing I forgot to add to the agenda, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. Kenny Calhoun, our EMA Director, asked, could he just come and give a brief report from the, this past weekend's flooding down on Flint River?
And can I, can we add one brief executive session on personnel? Two minutes.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Uh, I will be brief, but some of you may or may not know, but this past weekend, we had a flooding event down at, uh, Drayton. This event was not from any, uh, local rain, but prior weekend, the northern part of the state received heavy rainfall, uh, over eleven inches. Some places were approaching twelve inches. And all that water comes south and it has to come through Dooley County to get to the ocean. And, uh, so, uh, it started about, uh, Wednesday and, uh, the water was down off the roads, uh, Sunday morning. We, uh, had to close, uh, Drayton Woods Road, uh, Drayton Loop and Pat's Camp Road. When the water went down, uh, don't think we had any damage to any of the, uh, road or pipes, but, uh, to give you some, uh, idea, and I, I, my hats off to Chris County Power. They lowered the lake, uh, seven feet below normal pool. And, uh, that gave the water a, a place to go. But as I've said for the last forty years, there's no two floods in Drayton, Georgia alike. And, uh, normal pool at, at the lake is something like two hundred and thirty-seven feet sea level. The water at Drayton reached two forty-three. So there's a six foot difference there between the water at Drayton and the water at the lake. And, uh, there's some geographical issues with the river down below Drayton, some twists and turns. And it's a bottleneck. And when that water gets here, uh, it, it slows down and it backs up. And, uh, and like I said, there, there, there's so many variables that we can have three identical crest in Monazuma. And, and three different outcomes at Drayton, Georgia. But there was no local rain involved in this. This was all rain that happened north of us. The, uh, Rodney and I got together and we made the, we, we kind of knew which roads were going to flood and we went ahead and put out the barricades that we knew we were going to need. And then, uh, everybody kind of got the message that something fixing to happen. So, uh, we had very good cooperation from the folks down there. They, they got their, uh, belongings up on high ground and, uh, they secured things in their, in their yard like they, like they should do. And, uh, it was, uh, even though it, it could have been bad, uh, it was uneventful. Everybody worked good and then got out of there. And, uh, so just wanted to let y'all know, uh, cause it doesn't affect any part of the county except that little corner. But we were down there on top of it, kept everybody informed and, uh, and it was uneventful. So that's what, that's what we strive for. But, uh, that doesn't mean that we won't have another one next week. So, uh, this, that time of year. And, uh, but, uh, I thought it was quite interesting. It's contrast that, that there is between what happens at the lake and what happens at Drayton. But, uh, a lot of the variables is how much local rain we have, how much rain we have up north, how the power company reacts with how much water they let off, you know, had, had we had a lot of water south of us and all Benny had been at flood stage, they may not could have released the amount of water that they released. So we had a lot of things going in, in our favor, but we still had water across three roads and in everybody's yard down at Drake. But, uh, it, it was not a, uh, biblical flood like we have had in the past.
I had never really thought about it, but if you leave the, go up the river there, the, uh, power line, count the number bends and curves in the river. It's about six until you get to that straight shot at the lake. And then it's a straight shot to that dam. That's your problem. Because when it starts making, it's out in the woods. You got all these trees. It starts getting restricted. But, but, but where, where there's not a bend, it's a straight shot. It's headed to that dam and here it goes.
Well, and where you got those curves, you got some, some banks and, uh, water wants to go straight. And when it can't go straight, then it has to navigate and make the turns. And so that creates a lot of our problems.
That's right.
But I, I don't, I don't have a solution to that.
I do. I got a solution to it. This is going to cut us a, a, a stream.
A channel through there.
A channel through there for Lake Dooley.
Well, Lake, Lake Dooley.
And let the water run over there.
Now's the time to sell Lake Dooley as a, as a water reservoir for flooding.
Well, and, and be, and let me mention this. A lot of people out there don't, don't realize this. And even some of the people that live down there don't realize this, but the lake, Lake Blackshear is considered all way, all the way to the Highway twenty-seven bridge. If you go down and buy a home down there and decide you want to put a boat dock, a boat ramp, anything that affects the shoreline, you have to get a permit and permission from Chris County Power Company, even though you live in Dooley County. So when you drive across twenty-seven bridge, if you look up the river to your right, that is considered Flint River. And then when you look to your left and look downstream, that is Lake Blackshear.
I've, I've reminded them of that several times. Boy down there, there's hope everything spraying the, uh.
Weed.
Spotty weeds and stuff. And, uh, he said, well, we spraying up there around some of the people's houses. I said, yeah. But the power commission claims the lake is all the way to Highway twenty-seven and you're doing it for a reason. And it's funding. Spend some of that money up there in Dooley County.
Well, I, I, I will say this, uh, at the moment, uh, Chris County Power is, uh, looking for a, um, general manager. They, there is a lady down there that has had a position with them for a long time. She is the interim. And I will have to compliment her in that, uh, she put out a press release as to what they were doing at the dam on a daily basis. They started lowering the lake earlier than I have ever seen in my forty years experience. And, uh, and I have to compliment her that she, I think, did a, a great job.
If she set a template, then they need to, they need to draw from that. Every year you have one of these events.
And they also had a greater presence that there was a Chris County Power truck up there monitoring the situation, uh, on a daily basis. So, uh, we, we have never had that before.
Close that time.
All right.
That's all I have, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And one little thing I forgot to add, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Is Scotty Mashburn is here on behalf of the Dooley County Industrial Development Authority. We discussed the Pinehurst Bank Building in you, in Pinehurst. The chair has a need for some additional office space. So we made an offer to purchase the building from the development authority. The development authority has agreed, accepted that. So. But my mind is going blank. What do we offer? One thirty, okay. My mind went blank all of a sudden. I couldn't. So I'd like for, if the board still wants to, let's officially vote to purchase that property to be used with a serious deployment.
I'm all for that motion.
Seven hundred and thirty. Okay. And the motion in second. Do we have any other discussion on it before we hold on? All in favor by the show of hand. And that motion carries.
And he is, they have prepared a deed. I meant to get it, I'll send it to you for you to review before we get them to sign it. If he, as long as he approves the deed, Scotty will get the development authority to sign it, bring it to me. We'll get it recorded and I'll get you a check for the property.
They finalize all the issues that at the roof.
The roof is.
They will handle.
IDA is taking care of the roof issues. And that's all, that was the only issue I was aware of that we asking them to take care of.
Sheriff was going to paint.
And sheriffs already. Already. He's already got all that going into work. So appreciate y'all working with us on this project. Anything else you got right now? All right. Like I said, I'll get Bert to review the deed and I'll get back with you once he has reviewed. Thank you, sir. Okay. And then the two David's had it out. You wanted to. Oh, thanks. We'll wait, wait you that last.
Okay. The only thing I want to do, mention about, uh, that, that, the part of the road that going over, uh.
West Road.
West Road into Little. That is unreal though. That thing about as bad as it can be. And they're not doing it. And why?
I thought they got some funding for that.
I'm not mistaken. They've got it. They're under contract. The contract is just, I think it's the same contractor that, that was going to do our LMEG last year, that Nick get around to it last year. I understand, if I'm not mistaken, it's in line to get done this year.
It sure needs to. It, it's really, it's, I don't hardly complain about anything, but you can't hardly go down there. I mean, you have to deduct and, well, a lot of people go in the grass. They keep pretending. I'm, I'm dead serious. Didn't drive over there.
I'll check on that, but I'm pretty sure city, it was supposed to have gotten done last summer, but.
So it's in the making. They be asking me all the time. I said, I can't, that's, that's, that's in the jurisdiction. I said, I mean, you know, but we're bringing up into me.
The man don't spend that money.
Yeah.
Well, did you have, you have something besides the zone? Didn't you have a zoning? Okay. So you got some executive session.
Okay. Need a motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I have the motion in second that we, uh, go into the.
For the purpose of personnel.
Personnel, okay. All right.
See you later.
You're welcome. Stick around.
He ready to go.
He been ready to go. Watch out, Tim. All right, let's, uh, thank you.
This conference will now be recorded.
All right, well, we.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of executive session as read in executive session.
I second.
There's been a motion in seconds. All in favor by the show of hand. That motion carries. We are now back in regular section.
Do we have anything else, Mr. Chairman? Mr. Steve? Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn.
That's second.
What's the difference in the paint lines?
I want to see, um, Drayton. You don't hate the vision. Adjourn, yeah.
Oh, oh, I thought.
Meeting adjourned at twelve oh one.